First order of business is to pledge allegiance to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. If we could, let's have a moment to sign those people that was involved in that following over in Boston. Okay. Thank you. I've lost mine yet.
I have two.
Have you got one? Okay. No, there it is. First order of business, if you all had a chance to look at the amendments preceding meeting, is there any additions or corrections? All the need approbation to approve amendments, subdue.
Second.
Then move the second amendment to be approved and presented on the favor of say aye.
Aye.
Close. Motion carried. Department head reports. Uh, Jerus, go review the report for Jay.
Yeah. They've been cleaning around the garage and cleaning up the trucks, getting ready for spring work. Uh, they've been out on the road picking up trash. People in the spring like to take their trash out and throw it along the road. You know, these are spring house clean, they take the trash out and throw it along the road. So, they've been out picking up a lot of trash. Uh, they've also been servicing the lawnmowers for the cemetery crew and for their own particular stuff. And then, uh, they've got the super patchers out, they're starting to spray patch. Um, so they've got them going. Uh, and then they're using the regular patch on the roads too. They've got some pug mix of putting on patches. And I guess that's the, uh, Jay's on vacation, he'll return the 29th of this month. And then, uh, then I guess the attorney has something for, uh, for Brian Steele. Uh, before he talks, I'll go ahead and finish what I was going to talk about this morning. Uh, Bridge 82, I thought they was, the bridge was going a little bit slow out there, so, um, we had a little conference last week and they brought in a new foreman out there. Nothing wrong with the old foreman, he was a real nice guy, but he was a finished carpenter. And that's his line of expertise. And, uh, he just moved a little slow because of being a finished carpenter, that's just the way finished carpenters are, you know, just, uh, real particular about it. And, uh, so, they brought in another foreman and things have speeded up quite a bit since then, so, I'm glad to see things speeding up. Because the longer it takes, the more money it costs us, so I'm, I'm interested in keeping that time down as much as possible. Then I'm going to go before council, uh, the next council meeting, I'm going to ask for $230,000 for Bridge 61. That's the one out on 350 East, right there by Grubbs's Farm, right there, Charlie Grubbs's Farm, right there. And, uh, the estimate on the bridge is about 200, roughly 200,000, but you gotta have a little more. And then they gotta include the, uh, bridge inspection in that amount of money also. So that's why I'm asking for that. And then I've also got the contract for, from Certified Engineering for the bridge inspection of 61. And, um, I'll show it to you and then you guys can make a motion. We've already accepted.
Already accepted them, no.
Already accepted, but this is, and they both have the sign, we will keep it originals and, uh, and, uh, they'll have the original also.
And it looks fine to you, right?
Yes, I, it's.
Has AJ looked at this?
No, he has not.
Uh, why don't you have that, AJ, let AJ look at it and see if he thinks it's okay.
Okay, that's fine.
Is the contract construction is very, the first year forward, is he certain?
No, he has not. But I know that Jim Reese is hoping to get the inspection.
Eighty-two, did he say?
Okay, I've known him for years and years and, uh, I know his reputation.
Oh, no, for this year?
Is any, what bridge is that for?
Sixty-one.
Okay, that's for sixty-one.
Yeah.
Eighty-two's the one we changed before.
Yeah, eighty-two changed before.
Did you get the B E last?
Yes, right, yeah, we can, and they, they made a motion last meeting to accept this.
Okay.
But it's pretty sure.
You agree with that?
Okay. You didn't sign both of them?
This is past AJ's muster, we need a motion to approve this contract.
I'm moving to accept.
I'll second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close. Motion carried.
Martin, easy, that's fine. Thank you. Thank you.
Thanks.
That's all I've got.
Next maintenance, Bill Gray.
What do you want to go on?
What's your?
Only thing I have is Simplex Brineal has done their farm inspection at the courthouse. And, uh, they found a problem with the backflow preventer. And, I've got an estimate on repairing that. I haven't, I just got these yesterday, so I haven't had a chance to get them to you. So what I'll do is I'll make copies of these, get them in your box, and we'll work on this next meeting. I just wanted to make you aware of it.
Okay.
And the other one was on the sprinkler system. This is something that's been ongoing since the courthouse was redone. When they installed the sprinkler system, they did not install any low point drains or any airflow drains, so you can't test the system the way it needs to be tested, the dry system. The wet system's okay, I mean, there's no danger. It's just they can't flood the system because they have no way of draining it. And, uh, they also gave me a quote to take care of that. So I'll get both of these into your, your boxes and then you can look over.
Work on them next month.
And we'll work on them the next meeting.
Okay.
That's all, that's all I have. Other than the animal shelter, Zane, I think was aware of it, that they have a, they have a drain problem up there. We've got big gravel coming back, back out of the drain, so we've got to bust a drain underground. I'm sure it's from freezing thaw and it's just old. Um, I'm working on estimates for that, so I'm waiting on those and I'll have those by next month.
Okay, next month.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay. That's all I have.
Thanks, Bill.
Thank you.
IT Director Ben's not going to be here this morning, he had nothing for. County Attorney?
I think, uh, this just gave me, uh, we had an employee asking for, it's like four additional weeks of leave. And I think, I'm really careful with these, especially regarding, if it regards FMLA or HIPAA, to not release the person's name. Um, I guess for public consumption, but I don't know, did you guys also get this request for four weeks leave?
Yes.
Okay. So, um, yeah, I don't mind if you don't state it on the record, I understand. Yep, you guys can read and vote.
Well, it would, it would be an unpaid.
Yeah, it's an unpaid leave, so.
I think it's covered, it is covered in the handbook.
Okay.
Because we ran into this with an employee last fall requesting additional FMLA.
Okay.
And what that does is the, um, our short-term visibility in, you know, that we carry on all the employees, it allows, it, it will allow for so many weeks, and FMLA is short of that by a certain number of weeks, so, um, the employee will be able to draw, may, have the benefit of the short-term leave, but he won't be paid by, by the county.
Okay, okay. Well, I mean, it's, it's up to the commissioners to approve it, but, yeah, the 12 weeks are up.
It is unpaid and we do have another person covering the work, so.
Okay.
Uh, I would recommend that we took my approval. But we do need a motion to either approve or disapprove the, the request.
Make a motion to accept an additional time off for said employee.
Seconds.
Then move the second, we approve the, the additional time. Uh, is there any more discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close. Motion carried.
Okay, I don't have anything additional, at least not at this time.
Okay, thanks AJ.
Thank you.
Council Representative Shirley, got anything for us this morning?
No.
Okay, thank you. Mail?
Um, we do have a couple of things here. Received an invoice from Christopher Burke Engineering, uh, who is doing the, um, the reclassification study at Manlove Park Dam. And, uh, they have 90% complete, uh, this invoice is for $1,470, just wanted to make you aware of it. Uh, there is money appropriated for this, so this can go ahead and be paid. Um, and then, uh, we received a couple of letters in reference to our workers' comp, um, policy, and a renewal summary from Wilson Lawson and Myers.
What it says is that the, the workers' compensation is going to go up slightly. It would, it would have gone up significant, but we've had good experience, so, uh, that takes, well, takes off from the raise we would have had. And this is, this is a letter from, another letter from Wilson Lawson Myers concerning the cemeteries that I've stated before, that if they, if they have volunteers for the cemetery, the insurance company needs a list of all the people that's going to be out there, uh, before they are recovered. And that's the end of the mail. Okay. Old business. Soapbox Derby, John Posy. John didn't show up. Next item is the capital plan. This, this is in regard to the edit money that the county receives. And each, each year we have to devise a plan to spend that money, goes first towards paying off the courthouse debt and then, uh, is divided up between the city and the county. All the commissioners have a, have a copy of the plan, I'll briefly go over that, uh, the way we best have this written out. Courthouse project debt payment administration fee, 170,000. Courthouse operating expense, 110,000. And what that represents, that represents the extent that the utility bills have risen, that the amount of utility bills have, are above what they were before the courthouse was added, that the addition was added. Courthouse and IT security, $30,000. There's some things when they built the courthouse that they, they didn't have funding to do. These, uh, courthouse security is one of them, we put 30,000 in on that. Courthouse maintenance, $20,000. Then, to start with, there's $774,000 edit money that we're going to get. What I just read amounts to $330,000, which leaves $444,000 left. That money is split 52% to the city and 48% to the county. In the county's share of the edit money after the above bills was paid, we have $5,000 in there for public transportation, 110,000, partial funding of EDG, $15,000 in there for a regional economic development group, they're, they're starting a new, uh, or trying to start a new regional economic group. And with that, the reason that you might want to join that is EDA grants, uh, those are federal grants and belonging to a regional economic development group is the only way that you can get those funds. Town of Glenwood, they give us, they, they get a small portion of the edit tax, $1,000, and we, uh, historically have just paid their share out of, out of our portion. Community development contracts, $30,000, that's not a new expense, we have been spending 30,000 on, on community development, but that's been coming out of the general fund by putting in, and it, that legitimately is an economic development expense, so that will free up 30,000 out of the general fund. After that's done, uh, there's 230,880 dollars which the city will receive as their distribution. Any comments from the commissioners?
I'm in agreement with this plan. Are you ready to move on?
Shirley, do you, you want to say anything about this, Howard?
No, I think that, uh, right, the commissioner, the council, you know, has been pondering the best way to take advantage of the, of the funding that we have, to continue to fund the economic development group and the other, the other things, all at the same time taking advantage of, of what we're allowed to do as far as maintaining the courthouse.
I, I will say generally, we, we approved this capital plan in January or February, we've taken a little longer this time. We've, we had a joint meeting with the county council and the county commissioners to discuss it. We had individual meetings to discuss, and then last week, we had an executive session with the county council, county commissioners, city council, and the board of works, where everybody had a chance to, uh, discuss it, what they wanted and what they didn't want. Uh, so I think it's been talked about and it's time to, it's time to make the plan and distribute the money.
Well, I appreciate the fact that you've been able to give everybody the opportunity to know exactly what we can do from AJ studying it and, and explaining that out. I think it was a good opportunity last week when all of the particular folks were in one room to.
Right, they had anything to say, that everybody, everybody had an opportunity to, to express their opinion.
Yes.
So at this time, if, if it's wish as the other two commissioners, I would intend to take a motion if we approve this plan.
Mr. President, I'm moving that we accept the, the commissioner's capital plan for the 2013 edit fund monies. Can I second that?
bids, uh.
Can read them then.
It's been moved to second, and we approve the, the capital plan as I just presented. You know, if, if you would read the bids, and then, then we'll go with the rest agenda All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close. and then recess for a short period if we need to, to, uh, study the bids and, and then Motion carried. Next item is the cemetery, did openings for the cemetery mowing, mowing. come back. Cause the, we do need a word of contract today, it's time to move gears. Would you, if you want to announce what the, what the bids are? Here's, uh, here's the bids, if you want to open them, tell us what they said, what's
You want to, you want to adjourn for a little bit, is that what you're saying?
No. this here did?
Well, read the, yeah, read the votes.
Just read the amount of the bids, we've gone with the rest of the thing, and then
That's just, we, we kept, um, a list of, uh, who had picked up specifications.
we'll recess for a little bit. Everybody, the three commissioners can read the bids and, and then they can decide, come Okay. back and make a decision.
I have one from Cory's Lawn Service, uh, from here in Connersville. They actually presented a four-year contract, the first year for mowing, trimming, blowing off all stones and maintaining 20 Pioneer cemeteries for this year, if you laid, excuse me, 2013, uh, late April to October, $21,975. For next year, $24,330, and the seam for this succeeding two years.
Hey, I have one from Larry Booth, and it's, uh, unless due to a drought, um, he's taken care of 20 cemeteries. Uh, it says, price I am proposing is $1,500 per mowing, or per moving. This will take time to travel, so on and so forth. Um, they have 26 years' experience. The other one I have is broke down, itemized per cemetery, and it is an average of 20 mows, um, 1,045 per mow, which comes out to be $20,900.
Who was that from?
Oh, sorry. Um, that was from, uh, Get Green Lawn Care.
Okay.
Just keep these together if you want.
Yeah, that's, that's if you want to do the rest of the meeting, then we'll recess and give all the commissioners a chance to read them and then make a decision.
Make sure you're comparing apples to apples.
Yeah, make sure we're comparing apples to apples. Next item is new business, David Coell.
I'm the, uh, on the Fayette County Solid Water Conservation District Board, and, uh, this year we're initiating a rain barrel program to try to reach, broaden our reach to the citizens of the county and the city. And, uh, what I'm here for is to ask you permission to put a rain barrel, uh, system out here on the, uh, well, I'll show you a picture.
Okay.
Easier to show it than explain it. If you go out the door and look to your right, this is what you'd see. Be tapping into the, uh, Westernmost Downstout on the north face there. The barrels would be behind the railing on that ramp, so they'd be out of the way. Barrels are three feet high, the railing is 32 inches high. I think that it would not interfere with use of the railing. Barrel's two, two feet diameter. And, uh, we would, uh, be responsible, of course, for installing it and maintaining it and then removing it in the fall, uh, before it freezes. I talked to Mr. Gray about it briefly, and he indicated to me that he saw no problem with, with that being there. What we'd do then is run the plumbing from it down to the flower garden. Uh, it would, and we can do it in such a way that it won't interfere with the ramp. I can bury it, that there's a seam in the concrete that I can bury the plumbing in so that it's entirely out of the, out of the foot, foot traffic or wheelchair traffic or whatever in that ramp. So I'm here to ask you.
So there won't be any pipes to trip over?
I'm sorry?
There won't be any pipes to trip over or travel over?
No, sir. No, sir. It'll be right in the corner of the, at some points, it'll be right in the corner where the wall comes down to the rampway. And then there's a seam where I can dig up, Mr. Gray said it'd be okay to dig up the caulking that's in that seam, bury the pipe in that, and then I can bring it up and over the vermin into the flower garden. As I understand it right now, the ladies are taking care of that flower garden, the health department are having a haul of hose from down here, that extension office door all the way around, and, and by the way, across the, across the steps, uh, to give water to the garden. And this would probably not eliminate that because of the amount of water that might be needed, but it would at least augment that supply. And our self-interest in doing this is, is to help promote the rain barrel program we're planning to put out, and also to help with the courthouse flower garden. Here's, uh, some verbiage I put together that, about what we would agree to do and be responsible for.
Wait, we talking about a rain barrel program, you gonna do this other places? Is that what you're saying?
Oh, yes, sir. Yes, sir. We intend to promote that to the, to the public and, and the conservation district then would support it, supply information about how to do it and that sort of thing.
There won't, there won't be a way where they, anybody can get these barrels open?
They'll be, they'll be closed. I mean, they're plastic barrels, certainly someone could, could penetrate them if they wanted to. But, uh, my plan is to have it a closed system so that when the barrels fill, the excess, excess water coming down the drain will continue to go down the drain. Uh, there will be a faucet on the bottom so that the, so that it can be opened to allow water to go down to the flower garden. If someone were to vandalize it or, or open that up, then the water would run out down to the garden or down the rampway.
But they're closed up where a child couldn't fall in?
I'm sorry?
They're closed up where a little child couldn't fall in and?
Oh, yes, they're completely closed. So, the, I won't be cutting the tops off the barrels. In some rain barrels, they do that, but on these, they would be entirely closed.
What happens in the winter?
They won't be there in the winter.
Oh, you just remove them at that point?
Yeah.
Just drain them and remove them?
Right.
Okay.
Well, we'll, then in fact, that's what I've written down, is we're responsible for taking them out, resealing the drain pipe, and, uh, leaving it as it was until the next spring. So, we're asking your permission to install that. I guess Mr. Gray's not here, but as I, as I mentioned, he.
But we had, we had Mr. Gray's blessing, you say?
I'm sorry?
It had Mr. Gray's blessing, you say?
Yes, sir.
What do you think?
I'll entertain a motion to accept putting in the three barrels for the Water Conservation District. Seconds.
Then move the second, that we approve Mr. Wilson's claim for the rain barrels. Is there any more discussion about it from anybody? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close. Motion carried.
Thank you.
Next item is community corrections, Michelle Dudley. Is she there?
Here she is.
door, all the way around, and by the way, across the, across the steps, to give water to the garden. And this would probably not eliminate that because of the amount of water that might be needed, but it would at least augment that supply. But our self-interest in doing this is to help promote the rain barrel program we're planning to put out, and also to help with the garden house flower garden. Here's some verbiage I put together that, about what we would agree to do, we're responsible for.
Wait, we talking about a rain barrel program, are you going to do this other places? Is that what you're saying?
Oh, yes, sir. Yes, sir. We intend to promote that to the public, and the conservation district then would support it, supply information about how to do it and that sort of thing.
There won't, there won't be a way where they, anybody can get these barrels open?
They'll be, they'll be closed. I mean, they're plastic barrels, certainly someone could penetrate them if they wanted to. But my plan is to have it a closed system, so that when the barrels fill, the excess, excess water coming down the drain will continue to go down the drain. There will be a faucet on the bottom, so that the, so that it can be opened to allow water to go down to the flower garden. If someone were to vandalize it or open that up, then the water would run out down to the garden or down the rampway.
But they're closed up where a child couldn't fall in?
I'm sorry?
They're closed up where a little child couldn't fall in?
Oh, yes, they're completely closed. So the, I won't be cutting the tops off the barrels. In some rain barrels, they do that, but on these, they would be entirely closed.
What happens in the winter?
They won't be there in the winter.
Oh, you just remove them at that point? Just drain them and remove them?
Right.
Okay.
Well, then, in fact, that's what I've written down, is we're responsible for taking them out, resealing the drain pipe, and leaving it as it was until the next spring. So we're asking your permission to install that. I guess Mr. Gray's not here, but as I mentioned, he.
But we had, we had Mr. Gray's blessing, you say?
I'm sorry?
It had Mr. Gray's blessing, you say?
Yes, sir.
What do you think?
I'll entertain a motion to accept putting in the three barrels for the Water Conservation District.
And moved and seconded, we approve Mr. Wilson's claim for the rain barrels. Is there any more discretion about it from anybody? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next item is Community Corrections, Michelle Dudley. Is she there?
Here she is.
Good morning. I met Thursday, last Thursday, with the grant review board from the Department of Corrections, and they have approved our financing. They've sent the contract down and need signatures. The only difference in this one is this is a two-year contract instead of a one-year. Normally, even though it's a two-year grant, you did a one-year contract. They're now doing two-year contracts, and they have eliminated the 25% upfront payment for CTP, for CTP only. We'll still get our 25% upfront for the project, for the work release grant. The only thing different is not CTP, we'll just get payment on what we actually bill on that. The same amounts were approved as last year. It will actually increase $40 or $50 because they're rounding up to the nearest $50 or something. So they said it'd come out to $40 or $50 more dollars on the year. But they need the signatures and return to them as soon as.
Does A.J. seen this?
I just gave him a copy.
Now, this will run from 7/13 through 6/30 at 15. Is that, is that the span?
2013 to 2015, yes.
Well, we'll wait, we'll wait to give.
You're here a lot, you know that.
A.J.'s opinion of, is his stamp of approval on this, and then we'll, then we'll.
Michelle, have you, have we had this grant before previously?
Since 1986.
Since 1986?
Yes.
So we just keep renewing this grant then?
Yes.
Okay.
The dollar amount, I think, has changed throughout the years as the programming changed, but that's it.
Is this the standard document as well?
Yes, it is. That's what the state provided me, and it, it matches the one that was signed last year.
While he's looking at that, Michelle, I would request you and everybody else that has contracts, if you could, further send to A.J. before the meeting, and then he could, he could already have his study and his opinion of what we need to do.
I just got it Friday.
Yeah, she just got it.
Yeah, I understand, but if we could try and make it a practice of letting A.J. have an opportunity to look at these before the meeting, it would, it would move, thank you all.
Michelle, is there a timeline on this contract, as to when they need the signatures?
They, all this they told me Thursday evening when I was left was to get it signed as quickly as I could and return back to them.
Says that the term starts July, the 1st of July, so.
Yeah, 7/13.
Do you need some time, A.J., to look at it before we approve it?
Well, I wouldn't, I wouldn't mind having at least a day to look at it, so.
Well, if we, if we, if we consider that our 1st of May, 1st Tuesday in May, that should suffice, shouldn't it?
It'll have to, I mean.
I mean, I would think, being, being the grant doesn't, the term of the agreement doesn't start until the 1st of July. Let's, let's just do that. A.J., have a chance to look at, have any questions or whatever he needs.
Okay.
Can we approve it pending A.J.'s approval?
Can we, can we make the motion to approve it pending, pending your approval that everything's okay?
Yeah, absolutely. We'll do that, but.
Do you want to do that?
But. It's going to require your guys' signature anyway, at some point, so.
Yeah, so you can't sign it until, so we might as well just wait until.
I marked it with, I believe it's the whole board and yours.
Okay.
Because this is a grant from the state, correct?
Yes.
Yes.
It's basically.
Yeah, it's pretty much, but you want to know that we're, that we're not agreeing to something we don't want to do.
This, I will say, well, I administered the grant for like seven years when I was a grant administrator for city and county. And this grant, more than, well, this grant is very heavily scrutinized by the Department of Corrections. They always sent their own audit team down, and it, part of the monies that go into that also are project income monies, which are fees that are collected for people being able to, offenders being able to be in the system and utilize community corrections and work release and, and all the other functions that they do as part of it. So not only is Diana watching it like a hawk at the city, which she's very good at the administration of it, and she is on top of it, not only is that the case, but it also, it gets annual, so it kind of gets audited kind of three ways. You know, Diana is watching it as it goes through, then it is audited along with our annual audit by the county, by the State Department of Accounts, and then the Department of Corrections also has their own special audit team that goes out and audits the grant.
Well, I don't have any notion that we would not want to approve it, but if our attorney wants to look it over, I think he should have the opportunity, and we'll put it on the agenda and take care of it 1st Tuesday in May.
Okay.
Okay. Patience concerns? Any volunteers have any comments? Approved claims and payroll?
You're seeing a different look to the, to some of the things you've gotten because this is our new, this is our new financial system, so if you have any questions about the way you're seeing things, or you want additional information, we can, we can get that from you.
Move to the second.
You move to the room?
I'm sorry?
You move to the room?
Yes, sir.
I'll second.
Then moved and seconded, claims and payroll be approved. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. This time we'll recess, give the commissioners a chance to read these proposed cemetery contracts, and then we'll come back and hopefully, hopefully award a contract to one of these gentlemen. Probing back order. Commissioners had a, had a chance to study the bids. Any comments from the commissioners, or a motion to approve any of the bids?
Mr. President, I'd like to move to accept the bid from Corey's Lawn Service. He actually gave us a four-year contract. Our attorney says we can only accept a three-year contract, so I will make my motion that we accept his bid for a three-year contract if that's acceptable to him.
That's fine.
Oh.
Is there a second to the motion?
I'll second.
Is there any discretion?
Before you guys, can we say on the record what that three-year contract bid would be?
Sure.
I think you're, you're just hacking off the fourth year.
Yes.
The first year is $21,975, after mowing, trimming, blowing all stones, maintaining 20 Pioneer cemeteries. The second year is $24,330. And the third year is the same, $24,330. And he has volunteered to, where's the names? Okay, that's it.
That was, I think, what we had had in the, as, an alternate bid was to do trimming on two other cemeteries, I think.
No, this is.
But he's bidding something, okay. What, what did he say? Plus, he has volunteered.
Well, read, just read what it says there.
Well, I lost it.
On here, I'll find it. As part of his bid, it says, "I would also like to add that any cemetery is beyond the 20 outline of the bid packet, I will volunteer my services up to two times per year per cemetery. One time prior to planting, one time after harvesting, to maintain for no additional charge as a way of to assist the county continuing their efforts to approve all the Pioneer cemeteries in the county." So that's, that's all the cemeteries that we've been trying to trim up in the fall and the spring, right?
Approximately 75, I believe.
Yeah, and that, that's a, that's a big bunch of work.
Yeah, that's in consideration with the actual cemetery missions, what they're trying to do, what helping them.
And you have also worked with the cemetery, the appointed cemetery board?
Yeah.
I'm sorry?
I've worked with them in all meetings.
But that, that will eliminate them having to buy a bunch of equipment and. We have a motion, motion seconded on the floor, except Corey's bid on a three-year basis. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. None too soon, it's time to move grass, right?
It's raining today.
You Roger, you Roger, son. I worked with your dad at D and M a long time ago.
Again, I'll ask if there's any more patrons' concerns?
Oh, we have Adrian needs something.
Adrian?
Yes, sir. Um, I didn't get one on the.
I'm so sorry.
I'm doing rocks out essentially.
You've been trying to cut it off early.
I had a grant, contract, I gave a copy to A.J. to go through. It's our standard, we're going to get another $17,000 put in bank, so that's always good. My intent was also to give you an update on the activities. Just a, I guess if you want to put me on the next meeting, I can come in for the grant.
Look, that grant was for the reimbursement for your, for.
Yeah, $17,500, or $17,500. There you go.
All right. Take care.
The grant itself is standard. It's a performance grant, I have to meet certain goals and obligations to get that, and that's what's coming through. Just an overview, that grant, C44P, days 3, days 25, 2B. And for $17,500, that can go into the general fund. Current activities, excuse me, we've started the ACAMS program again for the district. We've been busy running into something I've never had before. I have to give you a copy of an email I received, it's kind of disturbing, but it's been dealt with. That was from a disgruntled individual in another county, but he's been taken care of. I've.
How? That sounds kind of sinister.
Well, when you're six foot four and they're five foot eight, just back them in a corner. And I had a few choice words to say to him, man, I'll let you see the email, and I just drove straight to his place. So I'm not going to put up with it. The ACAMS program, you have to be accredited and meet your annual training with the federal government. The ACAMS and PCI program, I have my accreditation, I went through that training earlier this month. All this data is put into the federal database, we're in there, that's how we got our warning system, our alarm system. And we're currently going through this, this is probably going to be the last go-around for this program within the district. This is a 13-county district-wide, I'm the project manager for this, for the district. Our mitigation plan, I don't know if you're aware or not, FEMA is going to be here the 30th. I've started doing a review on our mitigation plan, see where we need to update. I don't know if they'll be coming up with any funding in the future, but any projects we can look at, that's something I want to be able to explain to them if they should ask. I've seen a few things that I'm interested in, so we'll go forward with that. That will be April the 30th, they did not give me a time if they will be, be here, but a representative from FEMA District 5 will be here, and I think someone from the state will also come down.
They're going to be in your office?
I think they've raised somewhere to meet over here, and I don't know who they talked to.
Okay.
So I will go find out. And as I said, at some point in time, I'd like to get together with the commissioners and the mayor, and sit down, and maybe some members from the council, to look at the mitigation plan and kind of go through anything we need to update and look at or add to. The task force, where I'm the project manager in fiscalization handling the grant for that, I had some issues and took that to the state, and that's been taken care of. The changes were made, so I'm going back into that with the grants people at the state to get that squared away, and that's going to keep moving until probably the next two months. Continuing education, I'm a member of the task force, I'm ahead of the mental health for that, I have a team member, Mindy Amor, who's also a team leader. The Department of Mental Health is looking at expanding their operations, I'm on their advisory board, so that's something we'll take into consideration. Been working with the hospital, I was an observer for their March exercise, and I'm currently planning the exercise. On the back of the sheet that I gave you is a copy of what's called A-SE, Home Line Security Exercise Evaluation Program. For our accreditation, when we have a grant or something like that, I'm judged on what I do, that's the basis of emergency management performance grant. The more I can do to satisfy that, there's a point system, and I'm very proud to say I'm ahead of that curve right now. Last year, I scored above the final grouping of points, so we, we got our check quickly because of that. The exercise itself, please don't divulge the date, because the hospital has worked up, has asked me, and I, I love him for this, he said, "Brig it up when you're ready, we're not telling anybody we're just going to do it." So I think that's the way to go about it. The other issues, we've got the 2013 festival, I've been asked to oversee the safety and the incident command for that. I met with them last night, got my final list of activities for the 2013 festival. There are a lot of things that are going to be happening, and we're going to operate this under the NIMS program, the National Incident Management Program system, which is way overdue, it's a legal aspect. If there were an incident and we didn't operate under NIMS, we could be in trouble. As an example, there was a factory fire in South Carolina where nine firemen were killed, and they didn't operate under a NIMS structure. And because that OSHA sued him, I think it was for $27 million, and that's not going to happen here, I want to make sure that doesn't happen here. It solves all problems, it gets rid of all arguments, it has assignments for people, it's way overdue. I'm going to be teaching a NIMS class for the Glenwood Fire Department. For their people who don't have it, I'm also going to be teaching a class for the new 911 dispatchers that have not been through NIMS, they need that. So it covers all the emergency services, it can be used for a disaster, but it can also be used for social events like our 2013 festival. And we will start having our meetings for that group of law enforcement, medical, fire, and others, logistics for this festival. We're going to be operating a command post during that festival week. I believe dispatchers will probably be at the command post, operating to keep that burden off the everyday existence of 911, because women are not going to stop having babies, they're not going to stop having fires and wrecks and everything else, this is in addition to, so we've got to handle this properly. I'm also arranging a meeting with the state fire marshal to look at how to stop tunnels from raining. Go away. The issue is about stages. Because of the state fair, the states came down, there are now new restrictions on people doing this. They have everything arranged, and I don't doubt it, but we've got plenty of time, want to clarify everything, so that there's no outstanding issues to look at when the event does take place, I want this to be seen. I talked to Jim Greason, the state fire marshal, and he's more than happy to come down with the team and meet with the key people in this and get this done. And I will make that available to you guys, lady, if you want to commit to that. Other than that, Frank, have you talked to me about security for Trader's Office, that issue?
Yes, sir.
Two days later, I got the programming information I needed, I went into the system, reprogrammed it, we're good to go.
Good, thank you, sir.
So that's all taken care of.
Appreciate it.
So that, that's it. And if you could, put me, please, on the next meeting for the grant.
Okay.
And I'll break info.
Okay. Frank, you there?
Yes, sir.
Hey, good.
Yeah.
You know, we talked to some of the, what about tornado shelters?
Run.
Are there, is there one here, where should we head to?
Go to the basement, go to the lowest possible structure. In any tornado, the more corners, the better, that's what the structural strength of any building, any geometric shape is. You have a corner, that's going to be your best bet, if you have a closet, that's even better, because you're surrounded by more tight walls. Anything that has a structural element like you have here, try to go to the lowest area, try to stay out of hallways that has a. try to stay out of hallways that has a lot of glass and high pressure. The problem with that, when you build a pressure, if you lose one glass, you create a vacuum and it pulls it through. So you want out of that line of sight. You want to be able to stay from that. Interior rooms are best, as opposed to exterior, you've got flying debris that you come through, then you have the problem of glass flying through. So in homes, bathrooms, in facilities like this, a bathroom, because it's a structure that's small, more vertical elements are involved, so you've got more corners in there, and the doorways are going to give you the added strength. So basically, remember the key, more walls, more corners, more corners and more walls.
So you recommend, if we were in this particular situation, commissioners, meeting, council meeting, people in the corridor or chairs, take a seat shelter, we should go to the basement?
Go to the lowest, take the... Yes, absolutely. Do not use the elevator, go to the lowest area. If you can't get there, I'll go to the bathroom. That's, probably needs to go there anyway, because it's going to scare your animals dead.
Do you have any of those posters in your computer too?
I can do that.
Get that in your notes.
Yeah. You're welcome. Anything else?
Thanks, AJ.
Thanks, AJ, appreciate it.
I think we've covered all of our bases this time, if nobody has any more items to bring before the commissioners, I'd entertain a motion made adjourned.
So moved, sir.
Second.
Been moved and seconded, we adjourn this meeting to the board of commissioners, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.